Welcome to the Stoughton Grandfather Show. I'm your host, Peter Vintrusco, and my co-host today is Roberta Habeck of the famed show, Left, Right, Center. And if you haven't seen it, you should because it's a great show. And we have three guests today. And our first guest to my right is Selectman.
Selectman Carrara currently.
Lauren Morris.
And the other incumbent.
Steve Kavy.
Steve Kavy. So we get that out of the way, and the first question is going to be...
We're going to ask them to introduce themselves and say a little spiel about themselves, a little dog and pony show, I guess. So we're going to start with Scott, then go left to right.
I'm Scott Carrara. I've served on a lot of boards in town. I did six years on Stoughton Conservation, five years on the zoning board, nine years prior to the Selectman, nine years on finance, and now I'm in another end of a term for another run in the Selectman world. I have a lot to offer to the town. I try to help out where I can, try to bring good thoughts to the board, answers to some of the problems. The key is, I listen, I hear what the residents say, and I try to deliver to them everything they need. Our job is to assure that the budget delivers the services and the needs for the residents, and it also supplies a harmonious atmosphere for the employees of the town also. We're kind of in charge of that, too. So I'd like to say to everybody that that's where I am. Most people know who I am, and I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Lauren, you want to say a few words?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Lauren Morris. I wanted to say thank you to Peter Vintrusco and Roberta Habeck for putting this together, and also SMAC for hosting this opportunity to meet and have a discussion with the three candidates running for Select Board. Before we begin, I would like to wish Mr. Carrara and Mr. Kavy luck.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Morris. I am a homeowner, a mother of two, a handsome son, and a beautiful young lady who both attended preschool, elementary school, middle school, and graduated from S.H.S. I have served as VP and then president of the Gibbon School PTA. I have an amazing husband who supports me 100%. I am a lifelong resident of Stoughton, attended Stoughton Schools, graduated, pursued a career in nursing. I am currently a new patient coordinator for all new Atrius patients, including previous Compass patients after its doors closed. I am vice chair on the Council of Aging. I am also on the Finance Committee, where I have learned so much in a short period of time. I am asking the citizens of Stoughton to help me win in the upcoming April 2024 local election. I'm very excited about my chances to secure a seat, and I'm confident when I do, the people of my community will find that we have a lot more in common than the current elected officials. Some may ask me why, and it's because I'm an outsider. I have no personal agendas, and I owe no interest groups, and quite frankly, I have no alignment with anyone, group, organization that believes that I owe them something. I'm free to carefully and prudently evaluate all spending issues that may come before us and/or major capital projects. I'm free to vet all businesses fairly and with the mindset, is this the best interest of the taxpayers of Stoughton? I have the advantage of learning about each issue as it presents itself, and I have no hidden agenda when hearing each issue. Remember, I am not in the know, I am an outsider. I have absolutely no affiliation to various department heads or alliances. I will be able to evaluate each issue without undue stress or negative influence, rendering my vote unique and with an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Go ahead, Steve. Your turn.
Thank you. So just as far as biography goes, my name's Steve Kavy. I'm currently the vice chair of the Select Board. My education actually is in a school called St. John's College in Annapolis. I sometimes tell people I went to school in Annapolis, and they assume the Naval Academy. It was a tiny school right next door. But after that, I moved to Massachusetts and pursued a master's degree from the Harvard Evening School in Management with a concentration in Finance and Controls. Since then, I've worked at a number of Fortune 500 companies, Big Four accounting firms in tax, specifically in the regulated investment tax compliance, and most of the work I've done has been either tax, finance, or specifically technology, project management, and efficiencies management. So that's my technical background. I got involved in town politics probably eight years ago or so, just as a member of town meeting, and got hooked. I really enjoyed getting involved and understanding the processes of the town. Shortly thereafter, I was elected to the Finance Committee, where I served a very short term before running for a seat on the Select Board. And I've been there, this would be my fourth election that we're currently in. I've been on it altogether six years now, and looking forward to serve the town for another three. During my time in the Select Board, as I mentioned, I'm vice chair, but I'm also on the South School Building Committee. I'm on the Stone Equal Opportunity Committee, as well as the Select Board Liaison for the School Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Redevelopment Authority. And my interests are pretty broad as far as the town goes. I don't, to be honest, I typically don't have any specific plan or agenda. What I really try to do is look to see what people in the town want to do. We're all neighbors here. Everybody sitting here, we're all neighbors, and we're your neighbors. And my goal is to try to find out what the community wants and to make that happen. And in the time that I've been on, I think we've been pretty successful. We've been able to reduce our budget deficits down to zero. Right now, our budgets are in absolutely fabulous shape, and finances are as well. Some of the key projects I've been involved with was fire station, getting that online as well, which is almost completed, as well as the sewer down Park Street. There's a couple of others, but I think I've probably gone on too long. So I do want to thank both Peter and Roberta for doing this. I know in this town, we've struggled with there not being adequate debates, opportunities to talk to candidates, and so I just really wanted to thank you guys for doing this. And for both Scott and Lauren, this town can't function unless people are willing to volunteer their time and energies and their expertise. And regardless of how this election goes, I have, it's been a pleasure to know you both, to be friends with you both, and I certainly wish you the best of luck.
You guys all did great. Great, great. All right, so let's see if you like it after you get through our questions. So I just randomly picked, we're going to go, it's going to go Steve, Lauren, Scott on this. Okay. So what, you're all getting the same question. What would you personally like to see get accomplished in the upcoming three years?
So the upcoming three years, I think we have some, in my view, one of the most critical issues. If there's going to be, for me, a silver bullet, a single thing that comes as close to solving the majority of our problems as possible, it is, in my view, senior housing. I think that we have a low available housing in general. Obviously, we've all seen our house prices go up, taxes go up because of it. And a good portion of that is the result of the fact that we have a lot of homes that are, where people, there are seniors who are living in a lot of these homes, they feel like they can't get out of it without extreme cost, or they'll have to leave their community. I think that offering senior housing, the option for senior housing, that's affordable and high-quality, will allow the seniors in Stoughton to find housing that is comfortable, affordable, has the resources they need. And that will free up the housing stock for people who are, perhaps younger, have kids that are coming into the school system, who are able to invest more into their property taxes, because their goals are towards investment advancement, rather than seniors who are taking an enormous hit as they're trying to preserve their income, their fixed incomes. So if we can move that tax base from seniors to younger families, I think that would provide us with the revenues we need, the investment we need as a full community. And so for me personally, I think there is no silver bullet, but the closest you can get to it, in my eyes, is to develop senior housing, which we desperately need.
Beautiful.
All right, I want to say one thing here. We're taking a lot of time, so I'm going to let the two of you talk as long as you want, but from then on, the rest of the questions, we're going to try to limit to two minutes. And then if we have to, if we get extra time at the end, we can come back to whatever questions you want to address. Okay? So say what you want to say, and say what you want to say as long as it takes you. But after that, we're going on two minutes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I think, aside from the fiscal stuff in the town, I think we need to really find a way to get rid of any debt exclusions. We need to make sure we have money in the funds, and when we have, you know, serious buildings or any kind of projects that we have, we should have money on hand instead of always having to turn to debt exclusions. And I also would like the communication between the residents and the town government to be much better, and I do have some ideas about that.
Do you need me to...
No.
Okay, all right.
It's usually the same question I hear for the last 15 years, one way or another. I don't have a knock-down idea that I want to focus on. My focus is to do what I was put on the board for, and that's to set policy, make sure budget is on target, and handle the daily stuff that comes in and sets before the board. I would love to see a lot of things like some more elderly housing. The problem is, the fair housing law sits on you like a rock. You think you're going to get Stoughton people in, and the next thing you know, the list is this long, and they're here. So until we can skirt that or find another way to autonomize the way we did it the first time around for the elderly and not fill it with, it's probably a rotten thing to say, but drug abusers, other people who don't measure up and stuff like that, they put them in with these elderly, and the elderly now become panicky. They're afraid to go out of their houses, and they've been there forever. But the job for me is to, when there's a problem that comes in, we handle it best for the applicant or what's best for town. Everything that comes in front of me, it's not a personal thing with me, and it doesn't, I will divulge, my wife is the town clerk, anything that comes before me that's about her, I don't partake, but anything that comes in, I vet it as, what could happen if the town did this? And if you saw it the other night, I helped out a little bit because I remember everything that we've done legal-wise, and Brian, when our lawyer the other night said Mr. Carrara's right, because I stopped a problem that could have arisen on a contract, Steve was there, and I had to tell him that we were fading out into an area we shouldn't be. That's part of being a Selectman, is being able to get that across to your members, because somebody remembers something. I'm very good at what I do when it comes to zoning, Concom, building, and finance. I finished all my terms on everything I did. So I'm proud to say that I have the tools, and I like to share them with my individuals. The reason I got back on the board was to stop the defray of that Public Safety Building Committee, whatever you wanted to call it, we had to stop it. Not because I don't like the people, it was the direction. It was over there, it was over there, and I came, I got on the board, and I said, Joe, because he was the chairman, I says, I want to make the, oh, no, hold off, let's get it off. I says, Joe, you can either do it, or I'm just going to say it, because it's got to stop, and we got to focus on one site. Then I got another site, which people agree would have been a better site, but some people were afraid to step out and just pick the money up and move up the street, which would have been okay. But the two fire chiefs said to me they could operate out of there, so you know what? Four other people wanted to do it, I'm in with them. I wasn't against the fire station or the department. Alls I said was, that could have been a better place, and it would have been less expensive, and we would get a lot more. So that's all I got to say. I focus on what comes before us. You can't, we always put, we had a four-year capital plan the other night. Half that stuff won't even come to light for another 10 years.
Okay.
So that's all I want to say, is stuff comes in, you have to handle it when it comes in. It's very important.
Who do you want to start first? No, I mean, it's the same way, Steve.
It's going to be, no, right here, Lauren, Scott, Steve.
Oh, we'll go back to that, okay. All right. This question, this is going to be a two-part question, but we'll do one at a time. I like my real estate tax bill to be lower. Do you have any ways to do that? If so, how? And this goes to Lauren.
Lauren, Scott, Steve.
Well, being the outsider that I am, I don't understand all of that stuff yet, but I do intend to learn more about it, ask more questions. Yeah.
Okay, Scott, you're next.
I'm going to put it to you where it hurts, Peter.
Huh?
I'm going to put it to you where it hurts.
Oh, yeah.
The services cost money.
Yeah.
The people cost money, and the delivery costs money. Nothing's ever going down. Milk will never go back to a nickel. Bread's never going to be a nickel. Alls we can do is try to keep the budget as tight as we can. This year, it's one of the tightest that we've done, and it's at 3.8. And that's a hard, hardcore budget. And it's just, things cost more, you know? When we first went into salt, salt was $16 a ton. Now it's $90 a ton. So it's like, we try to narrow it down, we shift. I'm a business owner. I don't know how much longer, I'm getting tired, but I shifted on myself, just so that we can give the residents a break. So I'm paying excise, double heavy tax, and I don't complain. Alls I can do is go, do what I can for 28,000 people, and then I worry about myself.
Steve?
Okay. Steve?
Yes, Mr. Carrara's point, I think, is very valid, that we have, our costs, the community's costs are going up, government costs are going up. But the question, I do want to just sort of take a second to zero in on your specific concern, which is not necessarily the total tax levy, but the effect that the residential tax rate has on you as somebody who's living in the town. And that's something that we can influence, right? That's something we can work on, because we have several, a handful of sources of tax revenue. It's going to be residential taxes, commercial, industrial, personal property. And how exactly that gets divided between, the total tax amount gets divided between those four buckets is something that we have some influence over. We can actually specifically have a shift, which you described, which we've always tried to respect both the demands from residential and also from commercial, because we can't shift so much that we drive industries out. But so we try to find a happy medium where we can shift some of the burden of residential taxes over to other taxpayers. There's a limit to what you can do with that. But also, more importantly, the proportion of our total tax base, the proportions can be changed, right? If we do things, make policy decisions that influence the increase in commercial entities, increase industrial, then just because it takes up a larger portion of the total tax base, it will defray the cost, total cost, away from residential. And the policies of our board have, unfortunately, it's like turning the USS Constitution around. It's a very slow process. But in this current year, we've actually seen a major shift in new growth, industrial and commercial. And that shift, that increase in commercial and industrial new growth is telling us that we are moving in a direction where we're actually pulling some of that tax liability away from the residential and into other areas.
Do you still want to ask the second part?
So the second part is, why don't you keep any new growth in a separate fund, so next year the tax rate is only based on 2.5%, not 2.5-plus new growth? Which, 2.5% of 120-some-a-million is a much smaller increase than 6% or 7% on 120-some-a-million. So that would save taxpayers on some kind of money, because you're only going up a 2.5% rather than 7% jump up for the next year. That runs into the millions. Already our tax from last year to this year is $9 million increase. That's a big increase. And every year, we average that. That's a lot of money for a town with the kind of low-income people we have here, a lot of them. So answer that question, please, and it starts with Scott. Steve?
Lauren.
No, I take it back. Lauren.
So from what I understand, you can't go past the 2.5.
Yeah, they can't, because they add the new growth. Say you get 5% new growth.
Yeah.
They add it to 2.5%. That means next year, you're getting a 7% increase on the taxes, not 2.5. So that's a big jump, that's a killer, and that's like that every year. And that's why our tax rate keeps jumping up, $9, $10 million a year, and it's just not right. And that money could be used in a separate fund to build buildings in the future, you know what I mean? And it'll also stabilize the tax rate to 2.5% rather than 7%.
Yeah, but I, you know, have done some studying on it, and I thought that was the most you could go up. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, because they add the new growth to it, and that's the killer.
But they have the new growth, and then you kind of base everything on the new growth, and I, with the new growth, taking some money and putting that away from the projected new growth would be a good idea.
But they don't.
And we could do that every single year.
Because they don't.
Yeah.
Did any of you, did he want to answer it, Scott?
I can.
Yeah. The second part.
The second part, yeah. I didn't realize, the night, there's only one night we can do it on the Board of Selectmen is to do a reduction in that, and I did it.
Yes, you did.
And I applaud Steve and everybody that voted with me. I mean, Deborah was surprised that she heard it, and she gasped, but it came out right. I took 375 out. I've been trying to do this for years, that we don't have to go the full nut and say, oh, my God, let's just guess it's going to be this. And then the sad part is, it's that and more. So I put this, it's like, that 375 shelved, it's going to go in the stabilization account, and that brings down some of the stress on the tax. It's not like a tax break. It's, yeah.
Well, it is in a way. I mean, if...
It is in a way, but we didn't...
If you don't add the new growth to 2.5, that's a tax break.
That's what I tried to do, and it's the only way I could learn from, we had talked about it in Finance Committee one time, and there were some shop guys in there, that Dave Laurie and a couple other people who, we were talking about it, and then I says, let me see, because I knew it was, you could only do it, there was only one meeting you can do that, and then it all of a sudden goes to free cash.
Yeah.
Then it becomes what they call the mass grab. Oh, we can go for this. Department start, you know, the wish list comes out, and they shake it out, and it's time to go. But we controlled it this time.
All right. What Steve says is patiently waiting there.
Yeah, well, I just, I worry that there's sort of a misunderstanding about the way new growth works, and I just want to make sure, especially people who are not familiar with it, what's going on, right? So if we sort of oversimplify it and say that our town has 10 houses, and that's it, and we owe $1,000, right? That's all of our taxes, that's the tax levy. Well, you know, you basically divide that amount, you know, the $1,000, by 10 houses, and that's what each person gets assessed, right? That's how it works. Now, the 2.5% proposition says that, it's a master of law, is that you are only allowed to increase that, those taxes by no more than 2.5% year over year. So the most you can increase it is to $1,025 the next year. That's the maximum you can increase it without voters getting involved, right? Now, new growth is, if an 11th house is built in the town, then now you're taking the total tax levy and dividing it across 11 houses. And what Proposition 2.5 says is that you start with the 10 houses, and then whatever's added by having an additional house, you get to add on beyond just the 2.5% to where you started last year. So that, there's, setting that aside, all that money is just tax levy that goes into general fund. I don't know, you couldn't, the laws don't allow us to earmark it or set it aside in any legal way, so doing that isn't, doesn't really, it's not practicable, practical, because I'm not even sure if it's legal. But also, more importantly, it's just not how like new growth works as a financial function. What they're saying is that you're allowed to increase last year's number by 2.5%, plus if you have new houses, you get to also add whatever that new growth is as well. And so that's how that works, and that's how we fund our government.
Well...
All right. Let's...
New growth is basically industry, not so much new houses, so...
Not saying new growth, anything that was not there last year is then is there this year.
And there's no law saying we have to go 2.5. A lot of towns go lower, because I think, because...
Do you want to add one other very good point?
They manage a little better. And also, we, department heads, give back over a million bucks every year, 2 million. Okay, I see that on the sheet the other day, for the average last 10 years. That means they're grabbing, we're throwing this money out there for them to grab, and they grab as much as they can, then at the end of the year, they're going to spend it, so they got to give them back. So that's, that's a few million bucks. That's a few million bucks. We overtax everybody.
The point I want to make is I agree with you.
Like Scott said, we can cut it down even more. All right, I'm not one of a kind.
No, the only thing I want to say is that's a separate issue, and that I totally agree with, and actually, Mr. Carrara's vote, I wholeheartedly support it. The idea that we have to take every single penny that we possibly can is reprehensible. What we should be able to do, and what we have done in the current year, what we did to a very small degree last year, is we budgeted appropriately, and we didn't need to take everything, and so we didn't. And that is fiscally responsible, it's neighborly, I mean, that's just respectful.
It's a tough thing to do, but because...
All right, I think we better jump ahead, because we've spent way over 10 minutes.
I would like to have them go with their questions, because we're halfway through.
Okay, so now, Roberta.
Well, no, the first person to ask a question. I'm going to have the candidates ask each other. So Steve is going to ask, he can pick who he wants to ask first, and then you have a question for Scott or Lauren, you can ask whatever, what you want for us. Go ahead.
Sure, so I'll go to...
But just answer us briefly as possible.
Yeah, I'll go down the line, and the question I'm going to ask is this, every interview I've ever done publicly, and also within my own industry, has always been the same. It's one of the most important questions I ask, to me, at least. And I don't expect any specific answer. There's not like a right answer or a wrong answer, but just to sort of like show that you kind of are meditating on this idea. And the question is about failure. I watch any meeting, any interview I've ever done, I ask, what are your thoughts on failure? And they can be general, specific examples of failures, what you've learned from them, but just what, as, you know, as a leader of the community, you are, and as a human being, there are times where you are bound to fail. And the question is, what do you do in those instances?
So you figure out why you failed, and what you need to do to solve that failure, and then you pick yourself up, and you, you know, then you will not fail. You never give up. You just keep figuring it out, doing whatever you have to do to make it right, and to make the problem you were trying to solve solved. So you just never give up.
Same one to me.
Oh, I don't know, ask Steve.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Same, no, same question. I thought we were only asking one question, but that's the one I always ask everybody anyway.
Failure? Yeah, I've seen... Yeah, I've seen it, and I've seen it sitting in this seat. I got an armory for the town for $1, and I gave them the dollar to the Comodant. That was a very nice thing, me and Brian Clancy. Actually, Brian Clancy did a lot of work on that. And it never came to be a fire station. That's all I wanted it to be, was a fire station. I figured that end of town is on 24 every day with a crash. You hear it all the time. Stoughton 139 crashed. Stoughton 139 crashed. The building was there, and it never came to fruition. I feel as though I failed. But know how you fix it? You come back, you get back on the board, you dissolve the group that's going the wrong way, and we end up with a fire station that the firemen seem to be happy with. It's all I care, is that they got what they wanted, and they're happy. And they had to wait too long for it. And if they had taken the armory when I gave it to them, we'd be talking about a self-school right now.
Not paying for a fire station, it would have been already paid for.
There you go. All right. So, you're asking--
That's how failure is handled.
You're asking the second question.
Okay. So, I'm basing my questions, my question, on people that have come to me and asked regarding this issue. So, the regional 911 was a really hot topic for a long time, and all of a sudden, it just seemed to disappear, like, the whole issue of it. And then, from what I understand, the contract was signed in April, but then there was another public meeting in July, July 27th, and there was a real short notice of it. They said it was posted, but it was not. It was like two days before. So, I was wondering, was there ever a vote on the regional 911? And do I ask, who do I ask first?
Whoever you want.
Yeah, was there ever a vote on the regional 911? And, you know--
I know we all got invited to go over and see how regional 911 worked. I made some time to go over and see it. And I took my lead from the Chief of Police and the Deputy Chief. They delivered to us an 88-page document saying why it should stay in Stoughton. So, I read that, and I took it. They're the safety people. This is what they want. I'll support it, because I trust them to be who they are. I don't know this guy, Hook, from a hole in the wall, but Hook is the right name, because he's got his hand in a lot of stuff. All right? Many towns, he's got an office in, he's going to have an office in the new Brockton safety place. He's got one here. So, I never took a vote on it. I was told that it was a town manager's choice, because he was re-moving and rearranging the operation which he has under the charter. That's his job, is he has a department, he has the right to rearrange it, and that's what he was doing. So, that pulls the selectmen right out of it, because we don't micromanage, and we have nothing to say. We follow the charter. So, that's how it went. So, there was no vote by the board to be made.
Okay.
Same question?
Yes.
Yeah. Scott more or less nailed it. The fact is that our charter is very clear, that with regard to departments in the town, the town manager has, is the only person who has authority. Anytime the select board, if we were to intervene in any way, it would be in defiance of our own charter. And so, it would have been really inappropriate. When we started the discussion of regional 911, we did have an interim town manager. And that created a little bit of a, and that's probably why it ended up more in people's minds as they were talking about it. Because, you know, in interim, like, their role is to keep the ship afloat--
Right.
--and not necessarily to make these large policy decisions. And so, I think our interim made the right choice of trying to sort of get the buy-in, include additional stakeholders in this process. And I back everything he did with regard to that up 100%. But once we had a full-time, permanent town manager, that was entirely his responsibility. It's literally what he's getting paid to do. And that call was his, and his alone, according to our laws. So, any intervention by us or vote by us would have been inappropriate.
Yep.
The information sessions that you're describing were not open meetings. They were just, the town manager himself was having information sessions. So, there was no reporting requirement or posting requirement. I know he's made an effort to always be diligent about posting, making sure people know about it. I don't remember the specifics of this one. But I, if it slipped through the cracks, I'm sure that was an oversight. He, in fact, didn't even have to do any sort of a public information session at all. This was a unilateral decision, but he just wanted to make sure that everyone had the best information they could at the time. So, that's, hopefully, that answers that question.
All right, Scott. You're up.
Well, and for the sake of, you know, I work with Steve all the time. He, we're both on a couple of committees together. We know where each other's coming from, and I don't want to put Lauren on the spot. So, I'll just ask this question. Did you have a good Christmas with your family? That's all I want to ask you, to both of yous.
Yes, I had a great Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope you did, too.
I did.
So, I did have a wonderful Christmas. Shortly before, so I have a 12-year-old son, I was just, he just turned 12, on January 2nd. And this was a big Christmas for him. There were some important milestones with this Christmas. Shortly before Christmas, we had a little bit of, we have a 16-year-old dog who was not feeling well, and we were very worried this was going to be a very sad Christmas. But full recovery, she's doing great. She could never be healthier.
It was a Christmas miracle.
Yeah. Ain't no grave going to keep her down, and she is doing great. So, we had a fabulous Christmas. Everybody enjoyed it. Thank you very much, Mr. Carrera, for asking.
All right. Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year.
Yeah, I'm going to skip to a different question, just so you know.
Wait a minute.
I'm going out of order.
Jesus.
All right.
What the hell are we doing this one?
Because, because I'm looking at the time.
Because she's the chairwoman.
We can do another show right after this.
Okay. Well, whatever. All right.
Stay another.
No, I'm not staying another. All right. So, this says Steve, Scott, Lauren, that's how I'm doing it. Okay. What major project, if any, would you like the town to do if there are unlimited resources? The second part is the same question, to do with the money that we have budgeted on hand. So, what is your dream project for the town? Sky's the limit, you hit the mega bucks, but then the reality, what project would you like to see the town do with the budget we have, if any?
Sure, sure. So, several months ago, the select board had a meeting, this was televised, with all the department heads. And we had, you know, a long list of all of these priorities, of things we could tackle. And the question was, you know, I have this list of 20 items, you know, what are the top three? And, you know, we had some roundtable discussions, it was all really healthy. And at the end of the day, the people who would actually be involved in doing the work said, "All of these have to be done, and we will do them all." It was, you know--
Wow.
So, yeah, it was shocking to one extent, but also to be expected, because the people who work at Town Hall are absolutely amazing. So--
But what would you like?
Yeah, so, in that spirit, I would love to--
You're the boss.
I would love to do everything.
Okay.
I think, you know, one of the top priorities, so on the municipal side, we have some really key areas where, you know, we have a police station that needs some, at least renovations, if not replacements. We have, you know, sewer down Park Street, and Phase 2 of that would be great. That would bring in a lot of economic growth. And that's fabulous stuff. One of, I think, one of the biggest and most important projects that we really have--
We've got two minutes here.
I'll be very quick. The most important projects we have right now is getting our schools renovated and replaced. That our youngest school is past its useful life. We need new schools. And so, we have the South School program, the South School building project. That would be where I would put my priority right now.
Okay. And what about with the money we have on hand?
With the--
With basically working within the budget we have. That was the second part. Is there anything we can do, working within our budget?
Working within our budget, and also within our, like, borrowing capacity--
Yeah. No override, no debt exclusion. Right.
Other than you're forgetting it.
Right. Well, that's why I said, "If any."
Yeah, so that's going to be a much more modest project.
Okay. But you have a modest project.
But the modest project would still be significant. I think a lot of that could go towards Phase 2 of our sewer down Park Street, which would absolutely bring a lot of economic growth. But we're not quite ready for it to actually, to do it just yet.
Okay. Steve, Scott, Scott, you have the same question. Keep it brief.
I went back on the board. I asked the residents to vote me back on the board. I got back on the board, because I wanted to do two things. Because the South School people are residents of this town, and they should not be shunned. Am I happy with this talk of a combined school losing the West School? Absolutely not. My kids were going to the West School, and they were going to take it from them when we were going to do the, well, it was going to become the Bad Boys School, and then we had the middle school.
Right.
Which, in my eyes, we didn't even need a middle school. We could have left it all alone, and things would have played out right. And we wouldn't be in this trouble we are now. What we should do is what I said at Town Meeting, go over to Brockton, they've built nine schools over there, go over and get the one that's the same size as the South School, ask for the architectural drawings, bring them back. If we have to fix some of the areas, because there's upgrades to be made, which probably wouldn't be much, but you got the whole thing, that's what you plant and you build. Not this elaborate, spoke wheel, ridiculous billion-dollar, because I'll tell you right now, the people in this town will not be able to support that, and I'm being right-up-front honest. They cannot. We could do a South School, but not this mausoleum they're talking about. Not after we get the high schools still on, the fire stations are going to come on. You put a modest thing on. I offered Donna, the Chief of Police, the armory. She says she can be where she is now. So, that's why the armory, and I'll put it out, I want the armory to become almost like the Great Hall at Town Hall, except we're going to move the building, zoning, all that stuff down there, and build it just like a Great Hall in the Town Hall, so that when meetings overlap and you don't have the room, guess what? You've got a Great Hall down the street, where those meetings should take place, and leave the Town Hall open to normal meetings, finance, stuff like that.
Town meeting?
Yeah.
All right. Lauren?
But, you know, that's what I think should happen, and that's what my focus is. I can't look, things change so much from day to day, that money is being asked for in different directions constantly. And it's just, you have to make the hard line. And we've taken the hardest line of any board to do what we did, and we wiped out, like Steve said, we wiped out subsidies in sewer and water. In one year, Tom was talking, we thought maybe five. But he pulled it together, and people can say what they can say. The guy's good with finance. And it brings out the best in us, because you don't sit back in the chair and go, "I don't really know." But we did it, and it was heroic.
All right. Lauren?
My dream--
Yeah.
My dream would be that the Stoughton Center is just revenue everywhere, beautified, with greenery, people hanging out like they used to when I was little, walking around the town, you know, meeting for coffee at the train station. Just if I had unlimited funds, I would just, you know, just make it beautiful, and then have Stoughton be the attraction that everybody wants to go to. The reality is, the South School needs to be addressed, and we should be able to find a way to do that with what we have. We have to. I mean, it was needed, needed to be redone prior to the high school.
Correct. All right. Peter, go ahead. You ask whatever question you want, since I went out of line, you can do whatever.
Well, you're jumping all over the place here. Okay. I'm going back in order, but I'm going to skip number three that you were supposed to forget.
That's okay.
But, okay. I'm going to address the, let's see, the Green Committee, Energy Committee, used the F-bomb multiple times to a citizen at their meeting, and the citizen's name was Jonah Rosenblatt. This select board appointed the member, and he's still on this committee, and why? Why is he still on the committee?
You got to ask--
Huh?
It goes to Steve, Lauren, Scott, just so you know.
Yeah, okay. Steve.
Well, they have to know the answers.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll start with--
You're Steve.
I'll start with that. To be frank, you know, I've been in touch with Jonah Rosenblatt. She and Tom and I have met numerous, on numerous occasions. I also got a chance to meet her father, who's a wonderful gentleman, and to address this issue, and just kind of talk it through, and sort of understand what's going on, and how do we deal with it. So, we do have some sincere problems. This is a case where this meeting was not recorded in any way, so it's, you know, we're listening to people tell their sides of the story, which are not identical. But even if we had excellent evidence of it, we have, in our discussions with Town Council, he's been very, he's helped us to understand that when you appoint somebody to a board, they have rights with regard to maintaining that position and not being removed arbitrarily. So, to remove him, which would be the only recourse the town has, there's no other, you know, we can't find anybody, right? So, it's just simply removing them would open the town to lawsuits. It would be highly unprofessional and inappropriate. And what we've done instead is to do our best to the extent that we can to speak with people and try to get people on a common understanding, and to follow rules of common courtesy. And that is the extent to which we have any sort of authority over this. And though the Town, the select board appointed these members, the committee itself is not a committee that is under any sort of jurisdiction of the select board. It was created by Town Meeting, and it's under the jurisdiction of Town Meeting. And there's a good argument that any sort of remedy, or any sort of, you know, any sort of control over that board ought to be done by Town Meeting and not by the select board. So, we're in a little bit of a nebulous area, and we're doing our best to work with the interpersonal elements of this, to make sure that everyone feels respected, included, and have the, everyone is able to exercise their rights appropriately and do that fairly.
Okay. Lauren's next.
Lauren.
So, if that is true--
It is.
--that is really problematic and should never have happened. And I would think that the people in the committee should have, you know, felt the same way. And if there, if, because that, we could introduce an article to address committees that aren't under the select board's purview, correct? And address, like, decorum. And if whatever happens, then this has to happen, and all that. So, maybe that could be put into something for the Town Meeting to address.
Okay. Scott?
Well, we did pass a policy of the Board of Selectmen, how people should act and treat each other, whether it's a Town Meeting or not, we're still the highest elected officials in town, and we could, if we wanted to push it, we can. I've sat in on one removal of an individual from a board, and I also sat in on a face-to-face to the Board of Selectmen, where I got an apology in the open, and then another person to the Board of Selectmen where I got an apology in the open, and then another person got an apology on the open floor. I would rather do something like that instead of removing, is to put the two people on the floor and make the person who did it make the apology. Because if they're big enough to apologize, it will probably quell that problem. But if they don't, then that tells you about what the individual's all about. Because when you take psychology in college, that's how you handle things. When they shy away and turn away, they'll always turn away. If they're willing to come forth and meet and forgive, it's done. But that came before us, and the answer was, a member said, "Well, you know, you can put a committee together and meet on the opposite side." And I'm like, "We got committees that you can be on the losing side, and that's the way it is. If it's four to one, it's four to one." I don't have a problem voting by myself. Nobody should, else should, because that's their right as being elected. So, why would we even think of having another Green Committee to talk about this side of it when it can be discussed that? Give Jonna Rosenblatt her chance to say what she has to say, whether you like it or not. It's an open meeting. She says it. If you're gonna vote the other way, you vote the other way. She had her time in the sun. But she's not malicious by any, Roberta, you know, we went to school with her.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did. And she was always very well-mannered, real nice person, classy. And I know her parents very well, I've worked for them, and they're just as classy. Their brother Brad, all of them, I knew them all. They're all good people. She wouldn't open her mouth in school, but she opened her mouth now because it must have got under her skin. And when I heard about it, I couldn't believe that that was actually said. I mean, sometimes you hear it, you hear it out on the steps, you don't hear it in the meal of meat.
All right, so we got nine minutes.
My feeling-
Go ahead.
And Peter, you know how I feel. I was gonna handle smack.
My feeling is, under here, the Board of Selectmen are appointing, so, okay, the Town Meeting voted for this committee to exist. But the selectmen appointed their, so they have the authority to fire that person without any fair lawsuits. That's my feeling. And my other view is, nobody should talk on a board that everybody's donated time. Especially, you're addressing a woman, F you, F this and that, you know what I mean? What kind of bringing up do you have? I mean, decisions like this, I look at it, suppose it was my sister, my girlfriend, my mother, you know what I mean? It's just, to me, that person should be fired immediately. And there's gonna be no lawsuits, because there's no grounds, no lawsuit here. That's my feeling. All right, so-
We got eight minutes left.
Huh?
We only have eight minutes left, so I'm gonna ask them-
We can do another show after this.
All right, well, we'll have it, but anyway, so I'm gonna ask them, I'm going, no, I'm going out of order.
Go back to three that you skipped.
I'm going out of order again.
Again.
I'm doing my own thing here, because this will be a quick answer, I think.
You don't really believe that, do you?
No. All right.
What question are we going for?
I'm going to 13. All right, so since the elections, there doesn't seem to be a lot of interest. We have three candidates for two spots. Last year, we had, I think, three candidates for two spots. We have nobody running for school committee. I'm on the redevelopment authority, nobody pulled their papers for the redevelopment. I think there's two on housing, I think one person pulled. What I'm getting at is, there just doesn't seem to be a real, genuine interest of running. So do you think that the town should change its form of government? And if so, what type of government could you see working? Go ahead, you can go first, go ahead. Make it quick, though, because-
Yeah, I will. My say to this is, I'm sure you grew up in a house, I know Peter did, I did. Politics, my mother was a Democrat, my father was probably an offshoot Republican, he'll go either way. I was a Republican, and that's the way it was. But, we couldn't wait to vote. It was your duty. We couldn't wait to vote. And you get involved, but it starts at the family level. You can't put together pods in a room and say, you know, "We're all gonna get the vote," because now you're gonna start focusing on one candidate or something like that. And the town can't get involved like they wanted the clerk's office to do certain things, but the clerk is the one that's separate from everything during a vote. She's in charge of the whole town, R.E. Whoever you have is in charge of the whole town. Nobody can say anything during that vote. That's federal. So, there's a lot to election stuff. It's gotta be taught at home. And I got involved in politics and stuff like that only because, believe it or not, Frank Crimmins. I enjoyed helping him run for rep, and it took off from there.
So you like the form of government we have?
I think the form of government we have for our town and the people that are in it works well. I know some people think it takes long, but it takes long to spend $120 million.
Right.
I got on in '88. You know what the budget was? $37 million. That was it. So figure it out. I've been there that long, and look where we are now.
Okay, Lauren?
Yeah, I think we should keep the current form of government. And I think it's all about communication, it's all about getting people involved, and that needs to happen. We need to get people educated on local government, how important it is, and get the younger people involved, the 20s to 40s. I'm talking to my kids about, you know, becoming Town Meeting reps. It has to happen, but it's all about communication, and we need to solve that problem.
So, I mean, maybe, you're gonna hate me for this, but I'm not sure is the answer. And I keep on oscillating back and forth. And, you know, what I think is that there's sort of two competing, you know, interests. One is, and this is true of like a lot of our lives, it's convenience versus assurance and controls, right? And our current system is very inconvenient, but it's also very well-controlled. You know, by the time you get to Town Meeting, everything has been so thoroughly vetted that you know there can't be fraud involved. You know, there's just too many eyes, too many people looking at it. People are sure that these things are coming in in good faith. With a smaller form of government, council of some kind, those things can be very convenient. But then you only have three to five, seven people who look at any of this stuff, and who knows what's happening.
And they draw their own finance committee within their own council.
Yeah.
They don't, your finance committee is defunct. So if you think things are slipping through now, those people get in there and they're in there forever. You can't believe how long they can stay.
Just so you know, I'm not for this.
No, no, I'm just telling you how it is.
Yeah, so, since I have, Steve's right.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, but I think, so that's why I oscillate, because when I'm trying to get something actually accomplished, it frustrates me how inconvenient it is. But when we get to the end of the process, and I know that things got through and everything, you know, passed the smell test, and we had all the people, all the initial input, I think, you know, this is really the way it ought to be. So I jump back and forth. During COVID, it was, it couldn't have been more inconvenient, and we still got through it. So I can see that our form of government right now is one that can function. But, you know, if we wanna get things speed up, or if we really rely on a smaller number of people, because there's just fewer people getting involved, then that's, maybe that's what we have to do, we have to find some smaller way to run government. So unfortunately, I don't have a good answer, but-
No, it's just, this is why, part of the reason why we're doing this early. We want this to get out, we wanna get, people need to vote. People need to come out and vote, people, you need to come out and vote. This is where, you don't really have control over the big government. This is where your tax dollars go. These are the people that are making the recommendations, setting the policy, setting the tax rate, setting the water rates, and this is where you should be concerned about voting. So this low 3%, it's sad. It's sad that we're not getting, we need people to get out and vote, to be aware of what's going on. And this is your town, this is your government, and this is how it is. So, get out there and vote, right?
And your block of voters is this narrow. It's now turned from 58 to like 82. That's your block of voters. And sometimes the 80s only come out for the presidential because that's all they can remember, so they hear, "Oh, it's presidential," so, but they don't realize they gotta keep going for the town stuff.
All right.
Well, even a lot of Town Meeting reps, they never open the book up.
No.
Until the night, you know what I mean?
That's what's frustrating.
You know what I mean?
Right, I mean, I watch everything.
We're passing things that nobody really knows what they're passing.
Hearing it the 20th time at Town Meeting.
Peter, when I first got up to speak at Town Meeting, I was scared. I was scared. I had been there like five years. And it was when they wanted to build the fire station, right? And then somebody wanted to stop it, and STIPS had come all the way from California to be here, and they promised them the new station, and that's when I got up and I says, "I can't believe you hired a man, dragged him all the way, handed his family out here, and now you're gonna tell him you're not gonna give him the station?" I says, "Are you out of your mind?" And-
So we're out.
We're running out of time. I'm gonna ask you a question. We got some more questions?
We got 45 seconds.
You wanna do another show right after this?
Tonight?
Thank you.
No. I ain't got the time.
We're, no, no. So, all right, we're good, thanks for tuning in. Go ahead, finish.
Thanks for watching the Stoughton Godfather Show, and thank all these selectmen and people that are running, but coming here tonight, we appreciate it. We got a lot of questions answered, but we got a lot more to go, but maybe we can do another show.
B.O.T., plenty of time.
We'll sign off. Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Thank you.